Chairman, we're live.
Okay, welcome everybody in the audience and those on YouTube. Today's Monday, November 25th. I'll call the meeting to your order. This time I please ask everyone to rise and follow me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Everyone had a chance to look at the agenda? If there's no additions or corrections, I entertain a motion to approve. Make a motion to approve the agenda for November 25th, 2024.
One second.
Move to second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Rita, come on up. Get to the right email here. The next agenda item is an action item is their claims and border claims. I didn't see any junior college.
No junior college.
And the only question I had is I didn't see the bills from Lake Shore on solid waste in the printout. Did I miss those?
I think they were paid last claims period, the first one.
Yeah, they were.
Yeah.
So where, let me look. It's going to be at 123,000 in solid waste in this collection of bills.
Yeah, and I believe that that was for the...
Oh, it wasn't actual Long Hall and stuff?
No, it was, yeah, it was for the hazardous chemicals.
Clean Earth Environmental Solutions, 69 grand.
That was hazardous house.
Hazardous waste.
Yeah, hazardous waste.
Thank you very much. That's where I was confused.
Yep, they just took them two and a half months to send it.
And Dow Rampel are the people that are doing our scale house. Okay.
And that's all done?
I believe so.
I haven't been out there.
You'll have to ask Scott. He knows what's going on there more than I do.
Morning, Mara.
And please don't discuss it at home.
Not much.
Good.
I make a motion that we approve the same vote orders for November 25th.
Move to second to pay the claims and border claims, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries.
I thought I had a question on the claims, but I thought it was interesting that we had airport assist for the corner.
Yes.
If we have to fly somebody home, is that our...
You know, he didn't explain it to me. He sent me the claim. So I'm not sure what that was. That's fine. Yeah, that was an out of county one, so.
Yeah, that's weird. That would be on them, not on us.
There's only one, that's all one.
Must be Mara's.
Actually, because I don't hire for many services. The combination of mine is...
I noticed on, maybe it was on this.
Do you know what the policy is? Scott has to, is the corner.
Whole bunch of equipment for shovels, shovels and more shovels. But I'm going.
We supposed to say recovered a body?
You'd have to ask Mara.
So that is for...
Like to get a little more, yeah. I didn't see that claim, so I'll take a closer look into it.
Interesting though, the policy is in...
By course and stuff like that. So if there is a fire and it's a lot like a, someone like us, we can just go grab a tool really fast before fire personnel get out there. It's more of an educational piece, right? Like, you know, in fire country, you see these tool caches everywhere. That's what it's...
Well, that's what that is.
And that came out of the grant.
Yep, it came out of the grant.
Okay, yeah, I saw all that and go, okay.
Commissioner Mopin, I would question if I were getting charged if it was a limb hike.
Was limb high assess?
Yeah, we'll look into that a little bit.
I don't know if he passed away in Valley County, but that was the best way to get him out.
I would think that that would be on them. That's why I just can't figure out why it's on us unless we had to bring somebody back here. But then you'd think it would be family or...
Trying to think of the circumstances. Okay, we're going to move on down. Our next agenda item is elected official reports. First one up is Mr. Miller.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. The resolution that I have on the agenda is to move money from the 911 trust fund to the general fund. If the Commissioners are aware, we collect 911 fees throughout the year. And then those fees, we have the ability to utilize those fees for the cost of actual operations of the 911 dispatch center. So the resolution that you have shows the expenditures that were made. And then it shows on the next column, the last column, the allowable reimbursement. Commissioners, I did send you a second email this morning because the original resolution did not have the correct amount. That can be reimbursed. So the actual reimbursed amount from the 911 trust fund is $237,826.35. Commissioners, what is allowed? I don't know if you want me to go into it individually, but it is there, which shows the operations or the expenses that are allowable and then the salaries that are allowable. A portion of the IT director salaries allowed. The dispatch sergeant is allowed for reimbursement. And the GIS analyst is also allowable for reimbursement. So the resolution that I have this morning, if the Commissioners are inclined to approve, allows for that money to be moved from the 911 fund into the general fund to offset with the cost of 911 operations.
Clerk Miller, I'd have, oh, I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
So when it talks about, it has the budget and then it has the expenditures. So we were way over on a couple of those line items. So does that mean that we are able to move more funding? Or we were just over on that budget and there's still only the budget for 2024 that we can...
That is correct.
Okay, great.
Go on, the 7,000 for repairs mean that you don't have any expenditures? Does that just go into a trust or a fund to use later?
That would just be considered as remaining cash, Mr. Chairman. That's how it would be tracked.
And so this is just a housekeeping issue then?
Well, it's kind of something you do every year.
It is, Commissioner Thompson, it is.
So I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve Resolution 2502 to transfer 911 trust funds in the amount of $237,826.35 to the general fund. Got a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
If I could approach.
Where was 2503?
Mr. Chairman, I was going to comment on that. I didn't see that that was included in the packet. So I think I would, if I can, my chief deputy was going to try to get that sent out and I don't think she had the opportunity to send it out yet. But I do want to make sure that the Commissioners have an opportunity to review that before they approve. But basically what that is, is when departments in the county have documents that we need to destroy, we need to have a resolution for that. But the Commissioners need to be fully aware of what those documents are. So I don't know if she was just preparing the resolution just to enter into an agreement with shredded or if there were actual documents that were being presented to you that were within the retention policy. So I need to follow up with Gabrielle to make sure that we get that before the end of the day. So you have an opportunity.
So you want to postpone this one?
We can postpone that, Mr. Chairman. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Miller?
Okay, thank you.
Well, so the shredded agreement is the same.
That's, Mr. Chairman, that is, that is correct.
Okay.
That Resolution 2503 was for the shredded agreement. But I, and like I said, I don't know if it included documents, so we're going to postpone that.
Thought we had that.
I think you had the, just the agreement was shredded, but...
I didn't see a resolution.
Okay, so we're going to move on. Next up, Tricia, Johanna. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have a request for tax cancellation. This is for parcel RP 0015400030, located at 1125 West Two Rivers Lane. Oh, excuse me, that's their billing address. This tax cancellation request is because there are improvements on this lot that were moved prior to January 1st of 2024 to a separate lot. And so this particular parcel needs to have the value of those improvements canceled. And then when we do the mist roll in January, the value of the improvements that were moved will be placed on the new lot. So we're just canceling for this parcel for now. And then in January, when we bill for the mist roll, we will bill them again.
So this is for .2893 acres in Dawn Drive. I guess my question is, the improvements, did they lift a house and move it?
That's, that's going to have to be answered by the assessor.
Yes, yes, they moved a house from Dawn Drive to...
So we're not canceling for their land, though. They're a large land value, too. Just the improvement.
So they're physically moving the house?
Yes. It's done prior to January 1st. So losing anything, we're just placing the value on the appropriate parcel.
And the reason this is a tax cancellation rather than a value cancellation is because the tax bills have already been created for the year, so.
This is cancellation 24-01. If you're so inclined to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that approve the cancellation of parcel number RP 0015400030.
One second.
A motion to second to cancel taxes on 24-01. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Well, the difference, this was just a little bit strange to me. Maybe it's just because of the amount, but the full amount's 315918. We're canceling 1452. So the other half of that is the land.
Correct. The other portion would be the land value, yes. Because we're not...
Almost exactly the same amount between the improvement value and the land value, so.
So if you look at that right-hand side of the tax bill, you can see the land value is $599,282 and the improvement value is $565,527.
Wish I had a quarter acre worth that much. Quarter acre worth that much?
Yeah, unfortunately.
For its location.
Depends on where it's at.
This is a nice piece of land.
Evidently, evidently. Okay, what else you have?
The only other thing that I think is important to update you on is tax bills went out on Friday of last week. Those who have signed up for electronic notifications of their tax bills, those went out early Saturday morning. So my office is officially in tax season.
Gets busy.
So if you stop by and we're all on the phone, maybe you leave a message and we'll get back to you.
Text you.
Yes.
If we didn't get electronically, I better check my spam.
Yes, yes, and mine went to my spam as well. The email address that it comes from is BDS@billingdoc.com. But if you search Valley County, it'll pop up as a Valley County tax statement.
Think we should have McKenzie put out posts and something in the paper? Check your spam folders?
Yeah, I will reach out to her today. The other thing is, is the treasurer's office will be closed the Friday after Thanksgiving. So I was going to see if she could let the public know to be expecting their tax bills and that also our office will be closed on Friday.
Good idea. Something to look forward to when I get home tonight in the mail.
Yes, exactly. All right.
Thank you.
Have a nice day.
Let's say Merry Christmas to that point.
Sue, I know you're not on the agendas. Is there anything you want to talk about?
Not off the top of my head. Anthony is here today and so I'm working with him in between coming to see you guys a little later today. Mara and I are going to work on a couple things at 10:30. Gabby's working with me at 9:30, showing me how to submit the time sheets to payroll for the time in attendance. So I've got a pretty day.
So Anthony's downstairs?
Yes, if you want to stop in and say hello, doing?
Great, catch up.
Do that.
Thank you. We're going to move to department heads. First one up is Annette.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're starting to slow down. We got 371 permits so far for the calendar year. We're starting to get a lot of finals and everybody wants in there before the holidays, all the good stuff. Starting to try to scan again. That'll be our main winter projects.
Something to do in the winter?
Yep. Just trying to get caught up on all our paperwork and things we didn't get done this summer. Still got quite a few inspections.
Good time to build.
Yeah. Have you seen, looked at all as far as your income this year? Where you're at? I can find out and I'll email it. Will that work? That'd be great, yeah.
I can tell you right now, there's a few...
Are we on, that's what I'm just wondering if we're on track or not.
You are wanting to know for fiscal year 2024?
Okay.
Thank you.
Doug's looking that up. We're going to move on. DeeDee, come on up. Good morning.
I'll just do the update quick and then we'll go to the action item. I just came back from the Washington DC conference for the Office of Juvenile Justice and Drug Prevention. Absolutely inspired and ready to hopefully have some conversations of making some difference, more so within our little rural county. One being, which I'll actually connect to the action item before you, is I think I've spoken with you guys before about restorative justice model and bringing that back. Prior, before I came up here, there was a diversion program that had some restorative justice circles with it. There's a new trend that's also going to be accessing 18 to 23-year-olds, adults throughout the nation, offering a restorative justice, like diversion idea to that age group. Because even though I think we all know, just because you turn 18 doesn't mean now you know everything and you're matured and ready to go. And so we have a lot of misdemeanor probation clients who are 18, 19, 20, who I actually carry sometimes on my juvenile caseload because we offer just different services and more supports. And so I'll talk with prosecution first before I go any further to see if that's something they're open to. But I do want to have a more community-wide conversation about restorative justice, just to see if our community is open to that idea. But I'll explain more another time. But incredible, incredible conference. And to see again nationwide how people and how agencies work probation and working with kids and families and young adults. It just was inspiring. The opening speaker, if you guys have not heard of him before, it's the Equal Opportunity Initiative, I think. Nope, Equal Justice Initiative. Gentleman's name is Brian Stevenson. He actually has a movie out that was under, was his story called, oh goodness, Just Mercy. And it just enlightened and ignited the entire crowd with his conversation. Absolutely incredible. So other, just a little question that I was on the board when I walked in the door this morning was my staff was wondering about Christmas Eve, if we were, if it was a full day or half day for our offices. I think we had done that in the past and that was the first question. And I didn't know if this was the avenue to...
It's not a congressional meeting, is it?
I don't believe so.
On a Tuesday.
On a Tuesday. I just did not know.
We're going to have to put that on an agenda for a decision because it's not on here to make an action item. So, but good call because we need to probably address that.
Thank you.
Get that on an upcoming agenda.
And then the next week or so, it just happens to fall that all of my meetings that happen, whether it be quarterly or every other month, are all happening in the next couple of weeks. So I'll be in Boise for Juvenile Justice Council next Thursday. And then the following week after that, I'm in Boise for the administrators' meeting as well as juvenile justice council. And I am the shopper for cram the van. So I get to spend money for 150 to 300 kids next week. But I'm going to try to do it all in a day and a half. See if it's possible. So that's next week. So the action item before you, Alicia Baptiste will actually come. She shows you guys all graphs, that kind of stuff is based on this information. And this is a snapshot of Valley County juvenile probation from October 1st, 2023 to September 30th. I do, what I was noting regarding the restorative justice conversation was if you look at that second, under one supervised diversion B, that's 35 clients we've had this year on diversion. That is outstanding. It's blown out of the water all the years that we've done it before. And so to have a restorative justice kind of model to help assist in that as well as maybe even bring some of the probation cases that we have that are just low-level offenses, we might be able to have a process that kids, our community, also involved in what that looks like. Because we have an incredibly strong community, especially those that are here all year round. And they really care for their kids and the kids that are here. So I really want that to be a good, strong relationship because it's absolutely without a doubt, our kids recover better if they have a safe and a strong caring community to assist them.
So DeeDee, it's, I'm reading, I, you know, look at the numbers. 14 to 16, like it goes, it just spikes straight up.
Yes.
Oh, my goodness.
Yep.
I'll study my mail.
More mails?
19, 19 of those clients who are between 14 and 16.
It doesn't say male or female on you.
When I sat on a school board, that was always our problem. You know, they just kind of go away for a little while mentally and then they come back and find their footing.
Yeah, and so, and we've really had a tough crew. Like if you check the law enforcement, they've had a tough crew of them 14-year-olds this year. And it's really frustrating the community as a whole. So I know if the community was more, also wanted to be involved in how, how do we care or connect with these kids? If not, they kind of feel like outcasts and they're nothing but screw-ups. So we've just, it's just been a busy year for that age group. So it's just been very prevalent on my mind. So that's kind of what all these numbers are that you see before you is just who we have served, how we have served them. Proud to say only one was unsuccessfully discharged from probation. And the two violations were that one person and it was drug-related charges. So these guys kept using while they were on probation. Other than that, they've been pretty successful.
So DeeDee, I guess I have a question on, if a juvenile is convicted of a felony, does that follow him through his life or her life?
No, for juvenile...
That comes off?
Well, I won't say comes off because that is a misnomer. I'm going to use different words. So for a juvenile felony, if there's, there's waivable offenses, rape, mayhem, robbery, that kind of stuff, those are waivable. Those can go into the adult system with adult penalties. For general, like a, to say you have an aggravated battery, someone that uses a weapon when they're hitting somebody, that could stay under the Juvenile Corrections Act. Max penalty would be 180 days possible in detention, up to three years of probation or up to their 21st birthday. So if they complete, just like an adult, they can have a withheld judgment where that could be dismissed when they complete it. Or it stays on their record through a formal probation. If it is to be claimed off forever, it's called expungement and they have to come back to court to even get that dismissal off, it has to be an expungement hearing through the court system and the judge then does that.
It really depends on the seriousness of the crime, felony.
Yeah, or just the fact that if they're willing to come back in front of a judge and ask for expungement. And sometimes for, I think for misdemeanor, it's a year after they turn 18. I always, I can't remember if it's ever three or five years after a felony that they have to come back and they just forget. They get on with their life and they don't come back in front of a judge to have it expunged.
Reason I ask that is, you know, we're not allowed to hire felony employees because of our insurance. And I've always felt like that's, that's kind of tough because that's what we've always been told in the past.
Juveniles, juveniles should...
It's all the felony.
Yeah, the juveniles should have their cases either sealed or it's under Juvenile Corrections Act, a little different. So I don't know how you guys gauge that or how you have access to those records. But that should be a little different. But I'll leave that to HR to respond.
And then my second question is, there's a whole list here of juveniles broken out by race and ethnicity. And my question is, is that just for data purposes?
Yes, there is.
If we're trying to end racism, that would be one of the things that should come off.
Yep, it has to do with, again, part of the big shift for the Office of Juvenile Justice, Delinquency and Prevention, is the ethnic and racial disparities. Even in our state, very much so, we have a very small percentage of those of color. And yet, they are the highest number that are incarcerated, both in our juvenile detentions as well as our adult facilities. So it's disproportionate. And so I think it's always going to remain a conversation of how do we work with those bias or judgments or is it just a systematic thing that does that? So it's always going to be a conversation of trying to nail down how to make it a fair and equal justice system.
DeeDee, if we were supporting certain entities which were more focused on our kids, you know, us financially into the future because we're going to maybe do things differently with some of these funds that we have in the future. Is that YAC that is predominantly overseeing some of these programs? Or where would the county look to invest to make sure that we're supporting kids that come out of these programs?
Right, I'll be transparent. I believe that's probably not an appropriate question for me at the time considering I'm the chair of YAC.
Oh, got it.
So, but I do believe there are, there are, like, in the Casket area is Horizons who do so much work for all ages of kids as well as elders. YAC is a huge supporter of, of programming.
Might be something we discuss over this next year. And really make sure we're plugging the, you know, some funding into some of these programs that may need financial assistance.
That's very fair. There's a lot within this community to support, so.
There is.
Okay, we're going to move on. If there's no more questions, I entertain a motion to approve the annual juvenile justice report.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the county annual juvenile justice report.
I had a, move to second and all in favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries. Come on up. Oh, you got it here.
May I approach?
Did you have one too?
I have one too, yes. But I need the, or I guess, Mr. Miller, if you would like to send that to me or I can just take it.
Take it, please.
Want to send that one too?
No, no, thank you. Have a good day.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Mopin, the building permit fees that have been collected for fiscal year 2024 were $536,724.35.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Okay, just got a quick email from Melissa, both of her and Alice. Alison are on vacation, so we're going to go to Human Resources. Mike, come on up. Morning.
Good morning. That's nice.
That's for anybody and everybody.
Well, I'm taking one of those. I'm going to take a little roadie with me there.
Take an extra one in case you...
So anyway, just wanted to brief you real quick on a couple of topics. Busy with bringing new people on board right now, which is a good thing. We're bringing a number of seasonals on board right now in the Parks Department. I think they've already got four on payroll right now with another three to four in the wings and a couple others that they are considering who have applied. So most of them are repeats from last year, which is always good. But we're bringing those on board. And we've already this month brought on two full-time employees in a couple of other departments. And I've already got two new full-time employees coming on board next month, both of them in the sheriff's office in the Civil Division, one next week and one the week after that. And I've already got two full-time positions, including one new elected official slated to come on board in January. So a lot of good movement in that regard.
And you're glad to get rid of the old one, too.
Yeah, 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 we're definitely moving on.
He's really glad.
I know, yeah.
Good to see you go, thank goodness.
Yeah.
Got to have some fun.
Oh, yeah. Also wanted to let you know that I'm going to be signing the service agreement today with a provider for online trainings for the staff. I was able to find somebody who's going to be able to provide three trainings for us. Illegal harassment training, civility in the workplace. Jeremy, just to let you know, they're going to do a cybersecurity train... a cybersecurity training for the staff as well. So anyway, got a good price on that. It's fitting within my HR budget for training. So the plan is to try to get that service agreement done today to start working with the staff on getting usernames and passwords set up in their online account. And then basically what I will do is send out an email letting them know, hey, we've got a training and then roll out one training probably each month over the next couple, three months and get those through the staff. So.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate that.
You're going to start that after the first of the year, right?
I'm going to start it probably, maybe I might probably do the first rollout after the first of the year. Right now, holidays being what they are.
Make out, take all three before I leave.
No.
Yes. Oh, yeah. Absolutely. Yeah. And then like a booster shot, we'll have them come in every six months and have them do them anyway.
Booster shot?
Yeah. Anyway, that's what I've got working on this week.
Quick question. Do you have the forms that I can get that shows Medicare that I haven't been insured?
Absolutely. If you need anything like that, let me know.
I will be coming.
Or I will get with Medicaid personally and get the forms, whatever we need.
Okay.
Yeah. But yeah, whatever we need for them, I, I do those all the time.
I'll tell you what, that's a, that's a long process. It's not easy.
It is.
And I haven't even got to social security yet.
Yeah. And that's another fun one for you.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
It takes three months.
Jeremy.
Good morning.
My question, Commissioners, I'm quite, I don't have a whole lot going on other than just the various projects I've been working on. Looking at, for, did some research on the building software and still planning, you know, the merit title and still just working on all the little projects that I have going on. And I won't be here. I just sent Commissioner Mopin an email starting Wednesday. I'll be out of town for the holidays and then I took next week off as well. I'll be in town next week, but.
Enjoy your downtime.
Relaxing and working around the house and stuff, so.
Eat lots of turkey.
Yes. Hopefully not too much. I don't need, I don't need a lot.
Enjoy your downtime. Try and turn off your phone.
Any questions for Jeremy?
Any questions for me?
No, we're all good so far.
All right.
Everything's still working.
Yeah, it seems like outlook has stabilized a little bit. It seems to be working for most people now, so.
Works great on my iPad. I haven't had any problems.
I have it.
Yeah, that's friggin' great. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy.
My name is Zoning, Sinda.
Well, so I finally got some of the-
Got some pictures.
Pictures. Oh, nice. This is called, and then this is the Big Creek Speedway.
What kind of board is that behind it?
The same stuff that they have out here, Rocky Mountain signs.
Huh.
So, they're cool.
Boy, that's a road to Big Creek, isn't it?
Isn't that cool?
If you meet somebody there, somebody's got a back.
Someone's backing us.
I did like those, so. I met with the people who are going to volunteer to be on the APA commission.
You did a good job on that.
I was very excited. They came in and worked for three hours on the ordinance and the bylaws and signed a letter of interest. So it's very exciting.
So I'm assuming you'll get that on the next week's agenda for appointment?
On December 9th.
9th, okay.
We're going to do the appointment, approval of the bylaws, and hopefully approval of the ordinance.
Awesome.
All that day. Everything's been noticed for that day.
Good job, Sinda.
So we will be done by the end of the year, then?
That's the plan. And then the P&amp;Z Commission is reviewing the comprehensive plan changes. And that will be a recommendation to the board and you will hear it sometime in January or February. We couldn't get the comp plan before this ordinance, but this ordinance isn't necessarily tied to land use.
So are we doing a public hearing on the comp plan?
Yes.
Do we have to do a public hearing to add this in?
There will be a public hearing for the APA ordinance.
There will be, okay.
But that's at the board level.
That's in, that's in January.
No, right. Well, no, your ordinance, the APA ordinance will be heard at a public hearing December 9th.
Okay.
The Planning and Zoning Commission is having a public hearing on the comprehensive plan at their December meeting. And they'll make a recommendation to you. And then you will hear comprehensive plan amendments in a public hearing, most likely into January 1st part of February.
Right, right. Okay.
Both of them are, those are public hearings. We couldn't get the comp plan before the ordinance, but the ordinance isn't necessarily tied to P&amp;Z.
Well, if I remember board, that has to do with that agricultural piece of rancher wants to put his-
Yes.
-land in for 20 years.
Exactly. Agricultural protection area. And I'm calling it the APA.
At any time, say that rancher does that, and, you know, he passes away, kids get it, and it's still enforced. Can they rescind that?
Yes, with a hardship. There, there are two ways to get out of the 20-year time. One is to submit a letter requesting that they be removed, which can happen at 10 years. And then the other way is if they have a hardship. And so we've kind of already put together the ordinance based upon the template that was sent out by the state. This board went through and changed some things. Very smart group of people. I mean, Shirley Florence is one of them and she's on the Farm Bureau. And so they really know what they're talking about. So it's kind of exciting.
Send us this here before the 9th?
I will.
I mean, to see what the changes are.
Right. I made the changes last week and sent them out to the instigator, Bill Leaf. And he's the one that got all those people. And then Kayla Tuning, who's very knowledgeable. And they're making sure that I encapsulated all of the changes they wanted. And then we'll send it to you in legal. We have a plan.
Good job.
Yeah, that went very well. I was quite shocked. Now, on the other end, I have, am not having luck finding a P&amp;Z commissioner from this end of the valley. Would you like me to reach back into the files and, and ask those people that have previously submitted their names?
So you didn't get the one that, oh darn.
Didn't meet five years.
Okay.
Well, I would think that would be step two. Send us, go back and see who's applied in the past and see if they're interested.
Oh, yeah, I can see.
We put it out. I don't remember looking at it in the newspaper. I think maybe it was-
You guys had it in your commissioner.
Yeah, that's right.
Notices. And I'm assuming it's on Facebook. I don't get a lot of Facebook stuff, so.
Yeah, I think we need to. We're there.
And then we, distributed information, have received an application for Red Ridge. This is going to be very large development that straddles Valley County and Adams County, like 30,000 acres or something. So I'm, it's been in the Star News, it's been in that Boise dev. You will probably have people reach out to you about this development. Please tell them to contact Planning and Zoning Department so that we don't have expert contact.
All right. All right, done that.
Sinda, do you know, is that going to be a phased development?
It will be phased.
Is it going to be a PUD?
Yes.
Okay.
And the smaller portion is actually inside Valley County. This, this is one of those I anticipate would take years to, to work through with all the agencies. I did talk to, oh, the sheriff, prosecutor, assessor, treasurer, and asked them to submit comments and things that they would be concerned with. I've gotten one from the fire department. You know, just so we start getting things on the table, probably have an agency meeting of some sort.
So what are they going to call it?
Red Ridge.
I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be its own little city. They're going to have a name?
We'll see. Red Ridge.
I don't think they're doing it as a city. They're doing it as a village.
I know, but.
We aren't there yet.
I think their biggest issue is going to be roads.
Yeah.
Roads are going to be huge up there with that kind of steepness.
So if you want to look at what they've submitted, we have an application in the office and.
Well, I don't know if that's a good idea. We do have an application.
We have an application.
I think we'd be, we should not look at that until P&amp;Z.
Makes a recommendation because there'll probably be some changes.
We're, we're kind of biasing ourselves.
It's a long drawn out process to get that.
Most likely. I would think, I mean, given the time we spent on Jug Mountain and Tamarack. I mean, there'll be a lot of considerations and we'll have to try to figure out how to work with Adams County and those types of issues. So anyway, direct them to Planning and Zoning and we can help them. That's basically all I had. Lots of stuff going on, really busy.
And I don't think harder about, I haven't even thought about somebody from this end of the valley. I know the, I don't know if they've been here long enough, but the people that bought with Gregers are very politically active and want to get involved. So try and give them a call. But I don't think they've been here five years.
I don't know. I know she ran for school board.
Right.
Isn't it time to look at that five-year window? Because it seems like it's going to be harder and harder to find people that might-
I think the intent was to retain the character of Valley County.
Isn't that state code?
No, state code is-
Is it six months for a commissioner, county commissioner?
Planning and zoning, I believe, is two.
County commissioners are only three months.
You guys need to look at that again, yeah.
Valley County has five. And I was always told it was to retain the character of Valley County.
Well, there's some characters in Valley County, I can tell you that.
However, it's hiring ones.
Becoming harder and harder to find people. And it might be that to get people that have some capacity, we might need to revisit them.
There he is, right there.
He's already done that. I wouldn't do that again.
Here, K&amp;Z, it's open hell. We need somebody on this end of the valley.
For what, seven years?
Like seven years, something like that.
I've been there and I've done that. But I appreciate that, Neil. I want to take a year off and go crazy.
Why don't we discuss? I mean, I don't know how long the gentleman's been here that applied, but I think we should discuss so that we can actually-
It's in the ordinance. We'd have to go through a whole ordinance amendment.
It might be, it might be time to do that.
The amount of people on the commission?
No.
The five-year limit?
Five-year window that you have to live here.
Early as we could probably get in front of you guys would be March. Um, I was going to tell you something else. You aren't taking a year off, Eld.
I am.
Very volunteered for other things.
Well, I have to build my spiritual life now.
There you go. Anyway.
We get to that.
It's got a lot of work, dude.
If Doug wants to have those put up, or if you want to work with Scott, or if you want me to have those put up, or I'll let you look at them all day.
Yeah, bet. Okay, we're going to move on. Larry, come on up.
I certainly appreciate you choosing groomer operator over planning and zoning every day.
I don't think so.
Uh, let's see.
You guys are so funny.
You'll get bored. PFC, we had a meeting, talking about the future and stuff. But the biggest part was there was a presentation by DEQ on smoke. I think we're going to have a lot of challenges next year when it comes to smoke. I'd like to see them come in and talk to you guys, give them the same presentation.
I mean, you looked at, right now, the Boise is getting input on remediation after all those fires?
Yeah, on the Boise.
Are you working on that? Or?
Yeah.
I was wondering if we should look at that as far as a county versus individual.
Well, it's kind of interesting. It seems like they're trying to do it under good neighbor authority so they can do it together, have the PAET and the Boise work together. Because that's been the question is, is when the PAET calls in a prescribed burn and the Boise calls in a prescribed burn to two different people, do we hear how much that total cumulative smoke is going to be on the population? That's kind of a big question right now. Groomer Advisory Board is working on a couple of grants. New groomer finally made it out to bid.
Out to bid?
Out to bid, yeah.
Oh, my, we're months-
They're having, the state's having a lot of problems with their bidding process right now, from what I've been told. Cloud Point, Cloud Point is the area above, above Titus. It's a real steep, sharp corner. And this winter, this summer, they went in and scaled the side of the hill. But they had to go out on, on fires, so they didn't get it cleaned up. We figure we've got 80 feet in there that we will not be able to use our tiller on. We're just going to have to track pack it and hope for the best. Brundage is curious what's going to happen with them because they can't back up in it. It's so small. They just kind of forgot. When I got out of it, they just ran out of time to clean it up.
Is that where it jumps up on the Brundage Road?
Yeah, it's up on Brundage Road. And then you go up around that real steep corner where it's just a straight cliff off the side, right there.
All the rocks were coming off.
Oh, yeah. It makes me nervous anytime.
Yeah. That's the one you tried to like, to get through there.
Spot. Yes.
Yeah, Titus camera's working in case you guys want to go online and see that. All our groomers, all our piston bullies are ready to go. We got a problem with the Challenger. It seems to have a short and electrical, isn't any of our forte, but we've got somebody that's volunteered some time to come look at it, hopefully tomorrow.
Is it blowing fuses?
No, it's setting codes off and it's not working quite right. You know, you know how codes are.
You know, that's-
We're hoping to, we're hoping to get up and start grooming tomorrow afternoon in some air, some of the high elevation. We want to get everything we can groom by Thursday, when the people come up and want to enjoy the weekend.
It was up there on top of the-
Excuse me?
It was up there on top of the mountain.
Yeah, top of the mountain. There's quite a bit of snow. It's just going up there. There isn't a lot. And even when you get down south, Anderson Creek, top of Anderson Cricks only got 12 to 16 inches. There isn't a lot there. Five inches of it is a hard pack. So we can get up there and kind of clean it up a little bit, but we can't get off, like going out to the burn tree or any of that. We can't drop down to the backside.
Larry, whatever happened with the logger up in Sage Hen?
Say it again?
The logger up in Sage Hen, is that still happening?
No, Sage Hen, Sage Hen's actually working out pretty good. John Wallace is the Emmett District Ranger. And he has agreed, because there is an error, because we've lost the two bridges down there. And he's, excuse me, he came up with a, a really nice loop that he's willing to give us. It's a little bit low, but at least we can add to it. And so I felt kind of good that they came to us rather than us going to them.
That's great.
Yeah, John's a pretty good guy. If, if, as far as that Challenger goes, if we can't find that electric, we'll have to bring agri service up to take a look at that. Yeah, the only logging that we have a big concern about is down towards the Y on the Adams County side. That's where the dog race is going to go. They are logging, but now it seems, talk to Yasha, it sounds like they'll be out of there by the end of December. It'll give us enough snow to get the dogs down there. Anyway, I, I, this doesn't surprise me a lot, but I've got a Valley County routing and approval cover sheet that we've sent through everybody and everything's good, only there is no signature page on it.
I had a couple of questions on it, Larry.
Is that the one in our packet? Sorry for interrupting.
Yeah. So on your, on your sheet, it states that this contract ends 12/31/25. I can't find anything in the agreement. It shows May 31st, 25. So is this just through May? Because that's, I couldn't figure out what we were doing from the end of May to the end of December.
No, we're not doing anything. I mean, that's summer stuff.
Okay, so the cover sheet just should have said 5/31.
Yeah, they, they actually have all their new, all their agreement people and all their grant people are all brand new. And they really don't have a good grasp on it. I would like to take this and bring it back to you rather than have you guys approve it today. Because like I said, there isn't even a signature page on it.
And this is not the one for the PAET grooming?
It's for PAET grooming.
It is PAET.
Yes.
When Jeremy talked about a modification of that. And in this one, on the second page, is the signature page.
F-25. Yeah, I don't have a signature page on the second one.
It's in the packet.
Huh. Okay.
Larry, two other questions. One, is John Hicks still on the OBL committee?
Yeah, John Hicks helps us on financials.
Okay. And then because this is for 2025, do we need to change Eld office? Put somebody else? Or because we're signing now, it's still okay to put him on his county contact?
I, I never even thought about that, but that's true, yeah. And I could, I could bring it back. Well, we'd have to wait till January and I could bring it back with a different, whoever's the- and I could bring it back with a different, whoever's the chairman at that point.
Doesn't matter. I mean, he didn't sign it. I just didn't know if it made a difference so that they had...
I don't know what, what they asked.
I think if you saw the signature page, it says Valley County signature. It does not say chairman, so anyone of us could sign for it.
And like I said, I don't have the signature page. My page two goes directly to my favorite thing of all, toilet sites.
Well, this one has Gina Jolly, it has Matt Davis.
I think that, if you look at the top of that, I think that's the, a grant change that we did last week.
Well, that's the only one that's in my packet.
Is there a place for you to sign?
And Matt Davis?
Is this for Parks and Rec budget?
Matt Davis and Elt.
Annual agreesur chair.
Oh, good, good. For some reason, it didn't print that page out for me.
So you could take it back and print it, or I can send it to you?
Yeah, if you send it down to me, I'll print it right away.
Chairman, I apologize for interjecting here, but I think that, that's a different matter. That's the actual operations agreement, and that was not formally placed on the agenda. What was placed on the agenda was a modification of the grant of the Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation Grant that Recreation Coordinator Dave Binghamman was gonna get through.
The one we signed.
Different matter, commissioners, and I apologize that that wasn't this agreement, yeah. So I think we have two different, I don't think that was approved yet either, Larry.
Yeah, the other agreement we approved last week, Dave came in, because all it was, was adding time to the grant, because we were running out of time.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I apologize. This matter was not placed on the agenda correctly, so...
So I'll bring this back to you next week.
Okay. Bring them both back, this one, the one that Dave did.
You betcha. Other than that, we're gonna be grooming.
Good, awesome.
Any ride-alongs would be appreciated.
Maybe.
Oh, there we go.
Are you getting, getting a lot of input back from your people coming back?
Getting a lot of comments on, especially the high-elevation stuff, not the low-elevation. Where I don't, we're gonna look at Smith Ferry, but I don't think there's enough snow there yet to groom. Take no chances of damaging equipment.
Nope. But it's pretty warm down there, in the valley, this year. Pretty nice.
All right, thanks, guys.
Okay, before we move tomorrow, I would like Ken to come up and hear the latest discussion. It's not an action item, but it's just that I talked to another board member of the Senior Center, and she was kind of blown away with the fact that they had never met, they had never discussed canceling or resigning from the board.
So is this the agreement, or the discussion, though, Elt?
This is for, on the 11/30 agenda.
That's our logic question, sir.
I don't know what to do, honestly. Because the other board members said, "We never made that decision." "We never met, we never discussed that."
Chairman, commissioners, then I would, I would present that, or I would propose that we have a matter placed on the upcoming agenda and someone reach out to the Cascade, if there is an existing Cascade, Senior Center Board, to have them come and have a discussion with the commissioners.
Well, my question to you, Ken, is how much time do we have before we lose the grant? Have a little more time with this?
The timeline that we have is, I think it's March of 26th that we have to spend the money by. So there's, there's nothing evidently that needs to be done, one way or the other, pertaining to the grant, other than all the pre-work that needs to be done before we actually start work. So we still have time to have discussions, make decisions, stuff like that. And that was one of the reasons that Douglas and I felt that it was best to come before you for the official...
Good, I appreciate that.
To decline the grant at that point, or not. I did reach out to Commerce and ask them, "What's the process?" They said, "Just send us an email." I didn't feel comfortable just doing that, so we wanted to make it a more formal process and get the decision made and signed off before we did that. So there's, there's no...
My guess of the 11/45 agenda item today will be postponed.
It could be moot or postponed.
What I'm gonna try and do, depending on what you guys think, is I'm gonna get either a resignation letter from the board members or not.
I gotta have something.
Because I'm getting two stories from two board members, and they're just dragging their feet, I think.
Okay, the thing is, we have no agreement with them right now at all.
Nope.
So they shouldn't be over there at all until we have an agreement, so...
When does that contract expire?
It's already expired.
It's already expired, so there...
Okay, and have we already been awarded that grant?
We have been awarded the grant, but it has not been funded because we haven't any, any claims on it. We have a lot of pre-work that needs to be done before we can start submitting for reimbursements and stuff.
Which tells me we could, we could get another board, a whole nother board for the Senior Center. We still have time to do this, right? Okay. That's my goal.
We need to replace all those heaters.
Okay, thanks, appreciate that. Now, we'll move tomorrow.
Good morning.
Good morning.
There are chocolates everywhere.
What? Somebody's thrown them on the floor?
She was putting them in her pocket. Don't let her kid you.
I like to hide them. Good morning. So one of the big things for next week is I'll be opening the bid for the Kings Pine Unit. So I decided to do that one as a larger unit. So I'm doing 26 acres for that unit. We did have a couple new contractors that came after the site visit. So we'll see how that bid comes through next week, and that's at 9:30 next week. So one of the things that I'm working on is working with Tire Holfeltz to become a Firewise Community Certifier. So there is actually a process to become a certifier, and you do have to take a course for that. So I'm working on that to see if we can start getting some more education in Firewise Communities here in Valley County. Because I do believe there is quite a few that we, we can start certifying and getting out there on the board, so... But it is a lot of work, so there will have to be a community representative from each HOA or subdivision, or however that is gonna be, that's basically gonna hold that Firewise community and all come out, certify it, look at basically residences, do hazard evaluations, and then also help them set plans to do mitigation in the future. So that's the big thing with the Firewise Community. It encourages people to continue working. And so I think that's, would be phenomenal up here. And just how much we actually do do in Valley County. Like, it's actually pretty incredible. Like, the more that I speak at different events and stuff, it's amazing how much Valley County actually gives back to their community with fire mitigation and the woody debris and the free woody debris up at the dump and all the bins and all that. So I don't think we truly understand how progressive Valley County actually is.
Yeah, that's a, that's a piece. Like, Cindy just spoke to us about, you know, what's going on with Red Ridge, that project. Getting out in front of the issue and say, "Hey, this is something we need to be looking at right now." If you guys want to do this, that's huge.
It is huge, and that's one of the big things with the fire subdivision plan, right, is making sure that it's being prepared adequately for what's gonna be proposed out there, right? I mean, that's gonna be a lot of houses out in the urban interface. And truly, that is one of the high-fire prone areas here in Valley and Adams County. I worked on at SIPA for nine years, and every year we'd have three to four 10-acre fires out there. We get a lot of lightning out in that area. So there is a lot of roads, because there was a logging area, and they have done quite a bit of work, but now you're putting more fuel out there. Houses are fuel, right? So truly, we have to make sure whatever's being prepared is adequate enough. But that's also part of the problem, too, is it's between Valley and Adams County. So the requirements aren't the same on the other side of the mountain, right?
So now, how's that work? Then part of that process is in Valley County, parts over in Adams.
Let's be careful with asking too much.
Well, that's what I mean, you're not involved with Adams, is that correct?
No, and depending on who they hire for that plan, that developer could request to do, or write that plan as a whole, right, as a whole subdivision. But this one, personally, I do not know what their plan is to do. So I do know that is a potential, and it has been done in the past. It's not required on that side.
Yep.
Part of the process, so, yep.
Mar, something that I would like this board to think about is I've been a member of the IRLCC, Idaho Plans Resource Coordinating Council. It's a statewide group. They meet usually twice a year, and it's all the fire mitigation stuff that's going on throughout the state. And as you said, a lot of people are looking at Valley County and how to set up some of their programs, and I think you should be involved with that. I guess what I'm asking the board would be if you guys would cover her expenses. Most of the time, IRLCC, which is a state-level appointment by the governor, they pay all your DM mileage hotels and all that stuff. But I think you would be a better person for that than, say, me or a county commissioner, because Tire was there, all of our guys were there, and there's a lot of coordination going on with not only forests, but with BLM ground, Bureau of Rec ground, BLM, all that stuff is all in one area, and it's, it's a great group. Maybe think about it, if you want to get involved, I can help you maybe through the governor's office, get appointed on there as our rep, whatever you want to do.
So does each county have a rep, or is it...
No.
So the governor may or may not want somebody from this area.
It's mostly Idaho Department of Lands, firefighters. And what they do, how they deal with stuff in North Idaho and Central Idaho, and there's a lot of ordinance building, there's a lot of woo-wee, and, you know, all that kind of stuff that goes into it. As I said, they look at Valley County for a lot of those ideas and suggestions and how to write stuff. And it's just a good group of people that really care about fire.
Sounds great.
So...
I mean, depending on what you guys would like, I would definitely be interested, so...
Get a hat printed up for you.
Yep.
Like the last, we met last week down in Boise, and it's an all-day meeting. And there's a lot of, a lot of input, a lot of people having issues throughout the state. And then they usually meet in Coeur d'Alene in the spring.
Okay.
So there is some traveling to it, but I think you'd be great.
That's the reason to get on there, you get it going.
Yep.
I'll work on that.
Thank you.
Hopefully, the governor would want somebody from this area. We are heavily involved in that conversation.
Well, and I think I have to go off. I don't know if I have a term, whether I'm a commissioner or not. I'm still trying to find that out from Seth Gregg, which I can stay on, which I can't. And then if something changes, I'll let you know.
Sounds good, just let me know.
Okay.
So the HOAs, as far as Firewise Communities, so if you get this designation and work with the HOAs, you would be able to identify those specific HOAs as Firewise Communities.
They would have to apply, but I could help assist them doing home evaluations, planning future mitigation projects, doing a five-year plan with them. So I can help assess with that kind of stuff. But truly, someone in that HOA has to hold the application, so they have to take it upon themselves as well. Hold that designation, basically.
Nice.
Yep, those are some of the big things. Any other questions?
Good. I know where all the shovels went.
Yep, yep. You'll be finding, so that's one thing that's really cool. So with the evacuation plan up at Jug, she made tool caches throughout the whole Jug facility. So there'll be some out there on the bike courses, some while you're driving, and some of the common areas, so that if something does happen, there's a resource for residents to be able to go grab a tool really quick, start digging. This is one of the things that got brought up at Smith Ferry, actually, that they're actually interested in doing themselves, because they had that large fire that was down there. Large, wasn't large, but about an acre, two-acre fire that happened down there. None of them had the adequate tools, so they've thought about doing the same thing down there so that the residences could find this tool cache and help basically start digging line before fire personnel get there.
I wonder if there's a grant available for that, where we could help do that sponsor? Some of those are out the county.
That is definitely something we can start looking into. And so it's definitely grant season, so a lot of things are coming our way. I'm sure he knows, so...
I know they're also working with Steve Holden in expanding the fire district down there, but there's some issues with that as well.
Yes, so they would like to start their own volunteer fire department down there. I do not know exactly where the fire line ends right there, so I don't know if they could be incorporated into Cascade